Good afternoon, the time is now 1:01 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of February 13, 2018 is called to order. We're going to start with public participation and then go back to the dashboard presentation. Marilyn, is there anyone wishing to address the board?
Yes, I have four people at this moment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to address the board. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments heard during the public participation portion of the meeting. Our first speaker is Andrew Brody and he will be followed by Julie Die. And I'll keep a timer here, so I'm sorry it's not displayed, but I'll be keeping track.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name's Andrew Brody, I'm the superintendent of Flat Rock Community Schools, so I'm the last school on your way to Monroe County through Wayne County. My school district has 100, I'm sorry, 1,993 students for the 2017-18 school year until tomorrow when we count again, so we'll see where we're at after that. I assume we'll be right in that same place. I came to speak to you today to, first, thank you for your service to the state of Michigan, much appreciated, on behalf of all the Wayne County superintendents. And also a big thank you to Brian Wiston, he's been a great advocate for all of us here around the state and especially Wayne County. He came and visited us last year and I was able to showcase some of the great things we're doing at Flat Rock Community Schools. And some of you I've met and I appreciated those conversations very much, and to the rest of you, thank you again so much for your dedication to education in the state of Michigan. So many of the things I heard this morning really resonated with me and it's amazing to me in 2018 where we are as a state when it comes to education. When you're a school district of 2,000 students like I am, you need the support of your neighbors to do your job very well in a public forum like public education. So I just wanted to let you know a couple of things that go on in lower Wayne County or Downriver as we call it. One of the most important things that we do down there is because of our close proximity to each other, I tell people all the time I could hit five or six other Board of Educations with a stone from my office because we're in such close proximity. We don't have a career tech center like a lot of the out counties do. We have what's called the Downriver Career Technical Consortium. And we bus our kids for our 26 programs to nine other schools, in and out, and we use the Ford Motor Company where they build the Mustang in Flat Rock to do so. So if you ever had an opportunity to come down at about 10:15 and drive into the Ford Motor Plant where they build the Mustang, you would see about 1,000 kids transfer on about 18 different buses to and from different locations, and it's quite something to see. We are very fortunate in Wayne County to have an enhancement village, and with those dollars, Flat Rock Community Schools was able to do a number of different program adjustments to better serve our population. One of those things we did was create a K8 STEAM program. So we have STEAM K8 and we have Spanish K8, and both of those things were vitally important to us because one of my Board of Education's goals is to make sure that all students at Flat Rock have an opportunity to explore all sorts of different things before they get to high school. And then once they're in high school, we can help them along their path to be successful, to find something that they want to do, really want to do in life. So really speaks to that workforce development that Randy was speaking about earlier this morning. We also, during my tenure, have created a K12 platform for virtual learning called FREVA, Flat Rock Academic Virtual Academy, started with about 20 students three years ago, and we had 162 students in that platform, now making sure that all kids in the Flat Rock community and surrounding communities have access to education, whether it be as a C-time waiver or what I call a button seat kid or a blended student. So really, really great things going on for us. And lastly, the last thing I want to mention is those partnerships that are so vital to public school in 2018. One of our greatest partnerships is with the city of Flat Rock. We've been working together over the last 18 months with creating a Safe Routes to School program with the Michigan Fitness Foundation and with the Michigan Department of Transportation, which if you've ever worked with Michigan Department of Transportation, that is a lot of paperwork that I had no idea was coming my way. But we are in the process of establishing a grant of up to $600,000 for Safe Routes to School, including different kinds of walking school buses and new sidewalks and pathways that are ADA compliant within our city limits. So really excited to have that partnership with the city. And then lastly, our partnership with the DCTC through Ford Motor Company. If you ever have an opportunity, and Mr. Wiston did have, Superintendent Wiston did have an opportunity to come see our mechatronics program, which is obviously, well, not obviously a creation of mechanical, electronic, and computer engineering to create new manufacturing techniques. That program takes place in Ford Motor Company where they build the Mustang, so right in the plant. So our kids bus to the plant every day, work with UAW auto workers, and obviously their lead teacher as well, to explore the concepts of mechatronics and building out new manufacturing techniques. So A, I just wanted to say thank you, and B, oh, my five minutes wrap up.
Good time.
Right on. Again, thank you so much, thank you for the time, and thank you for being in Wayne County today, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Die, followed by Linda Sybrick-Kilburn.
My friends and I that are attending today are wearing red to raise awareness of the epidemic of the Michigan murdered indigenous women's problem in our country and in North America. Tomorrow on February 14, Valentine's Day, Native American social media is holding vigil and posting pictures of red dresses on hangers, in trees, in a woods setting. First of all, I'd like to thank this board for your valuable and diligent efforts along with the Department of Education, with the ESSA and the dashboard, all the improvements to our Michigan education system, your oversight and your guidance to schools. This platform for ordinary citizens was written into our Michigan Constitution for a reason. Second, I had the opportunity to view the Education Reform Committee video on the House Joint Resolution M that was held October 19. That resolution would abolish this board, our state superintendent's job, and our community college board. As a citizen and a voter and a taxpayer, I apologize for the attitudes, the disrespect, and the shameful treatment you received by members of our House of Representatives. The politization, sorry, can't pronounce it, of our children's education made me sick and made me furious. Local control in rural communities with 90 percent plus white populations allows for the discrimination for races to run roughshod over marginalized groups, as evidenced by the number of civil rights complaints that are coming out of these small districts. What I can say is, I and others will remember these legislators and this legislation come November. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Linda Sybrick-Kilburn, followed by Yvonne Moore.
Bonjour, and initia, je veux un entier qui dit ce n'est pas si condamné, force de camouche du river. First, I'd like to say, Brian, it's good to see you here. I've come here today basically because we're at Wayne, Wayne County, and as a spokesperson for the Michigan Coalition, I wanted to point out, which I'm sure you're all aware of, of the five schools in this county that have Native American imagery. Canton, New Boston, Woodhaven, Wyandotte, and East Course. You'll notice on the map, this is a thing I put together, showing all the counties in Michigan that have high schools only with Native American imagery. And we're right here at Wayne, and as you can see, there's a few counties around Wayne here that do have high schools with imagery, but we have a large, beautiful white gap here of schools that do not have Native American imagery. So it's kind of interesting to see the layout of how those schools apply to the counties and the states. And I'll pass it around to everybody to see. I also bought a few pictures that I retrieved at some of the school. This is Canton, they're the chiefs. And not only the offensive of the word using chiefs, but they have an arrowhead in their C, which is towards Native American people. In East Course, we have an E with a spear, seems like that's popular here, with the eagle feather or feather in it, but they call themselves the Red Raiders. So with the word "red" connected with Raiders with the spear, it's still aimed towards Native Americans. The one thing that I really did find interesting was this that was on their website with a picture of a young child who looks to maybe be indigenous, and it says "East Course Raider Nation" with their logo. To me, that's pretty sad, that's a direct hit right there towards Native American children or indigenous children. I think the worst one I thought was Huron High School with the Native American head logo out front of the school, but there was on the website a picture of a mural that was painted on the wall of the school that shows a Native American, whoops, need that one right side up, with a headdress and a spear riding a horse. I find that very offensive. And then, of course, we have the Indian head logo that's plastered throughout the school, and they are the Huron Chiefs. The other one was Woodhaven, they're the warriors, and they also have the spear with a feather. So we kind of have an ongoing thing here with the spear and the feather. The one thing I did find that was really interesting was Wyandotte's. Their school is actually the Bears. They have a beautiful bear on their football field, a beautiful green picture with a bear in the middle and everything, but for some strange reason, the Wyandotte High School, Roosevelt Wyandotte High School, has chosen to take on the names of the chiefs and they use a Native American logo headdress. Totally separate from what their school does. Why, I don't know, I don't understand that, but I know the band has gotten some awards, they went to Washington DC one year and all that, but still, it's very offensive. So those are the five schools that are here in this county that I'm hoping that people will take aware of. People in this area will start speaking out, the Native American population here in the Detroit area will start stepping forward and going to the school boards and speaking to officials about these logos and start going through the process of elimination. I did file complaint letters with all the schools, as I said before, way back the end of June, first part of July, so these schools were contacted. I attempted, one school in particular, to try to talk to them on the phone, and I've not had luck. We've asked for appointments to speak to superintendent and still no luck, but we'll keep trying. Also, too, I'd like to say we support this board thoroughly, and I think what happened to Michelle and Tom was a total disgrace. When I seen that video, I can't even tell you the emotion I got out of that. I was very, very disappointed, and we totally support you guys, so thanks for the job that you did. We need this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for being here.
Yvonne Moore is next, followed by Jen O'Connor.
I'm Yvonne Moore. I am a Native American Indian psychologist. There are less than 100 of us in the United States who are clinical psychologists. I want to thank you for your service, because that's exactly what it is. You are serving the people of the state of Michigan, and that's an honor. And sometimes when you serve people, they don't appreciate you, but I want you to know, I appreciate you. I graduated from Central Michigan University 30 years ago. 32 years ago, I was the activist at Central Michigan University who got the mascots removed. Why did I do that? Because I knew something had to start and something had to be done. It was also at that time I changed my major from speech pathologist to becoming a psychologist. And in the 30 years of being a clinical psychologist, I have experienced the great sadness, pain, and hurt of Native Americans who have experienced historical trauma and trauma as of today. Do you know what it means to wear one of those headdresses? Anybody? You know the long headdresses that Indians wear, that you see in the movies? Does anybody know?
We don't respond back, but rhetorical question.
Oh, okay.
But we all know the answer.
But we know the answer.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, they're only used in ceremonies. I'm sorry if the media and the movies show them to you differently, but they're not used for public display. They're used in ceremonies, and our ceremonies are sacred to us. With that understanding, we don't want to see people using full headdresses as an honor when, if people don't know what they are, why are they doing it? And I would go to the games at Central Michigan University, and people would wear headdresses, and they put paint on their face, and when alcohol becomes part of whatever, people stop thinking clearly and ethically, and they made fun, and that's just wrong. Do you know what it means to be civilized? We talk about this great civilization, but what does it mean to be civilized? It means to be civil to one another. And one of our greatest values is respect. And when you respect other people, you don't make fun of them. I work with Native Americans, and that's about the only people I work with as a clinical I had part of taking some women back to some of the boarding schools where they were sexually abused. And it was an eye-opening experience, and it was a proof of the tragedy. Because of the carload of women I had, two could not go back, physically could not go back to the boarding school. But in my years of working with them, I have found that it's a family situation. I'm now working with three generations that do not see themselves as being able to openly speak up, that this hurts me. This hurts me to see my people degraded. So my job is to listen. And do you know the other word in listen? Silent. In order to be a good listener, you need to be silent. And as a therapist, that's my job, is to listen to them. But we also have to choose not to be silent in a cause that hurts a group of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here and sharing.
Our final speaker is Jen O'Connor.
Hi, my name is Jen O'Connor. I am here as a mother, not just for my own child, but for all children who are the 1%. A few on this board have received emails from me before, you may not realize it's me, but when your child is labeled severely cognitive, severely SXI or SCI, so usually that happens if they were born with a physical disability, you have many doctors already in your life from day one, and you come to the schools for direction. You do not think that 14 years later you realize that segregation schools from day one should have never happened. Kids who are taking the alternate assessment, the 1%, the SXI, the SCI, are more about, they're more than just funding. I can file all the complaints I want in the world, unless somebody has one of these kids' IEPs in their hand and see what's going on in these center programs, nobody is ever going to grasp it. There is no reason, with technology today, that nonverbal children should be silenced. My daughter and those like her are worthy of an education. Low expectations with common core essential elements is what's happening in this state. She's been trapped in her own body for now almost 18 years and no way to communicate We hear about SXI and SCI, the, well, you hear about the kids with the severe cognitive, and that's all you hear, and then it goes on to talking about less severe children. This is affecting entire life outcomes. My daughter is in a diaper still because of it. She took her first steps at 15 years old because of it. There is not proper services. It might look like it on paper, and I've read it. It took me three years of research to figure out that it was that alternate testing that has dictated her entire life outcome. And the state of Michigan, in school till age 26, when you are SXI or SCI, what does that mean? Nothing, absolutely nothing. We talk about funding, school costs so much, special education, we can't figure out how much it costs. Let's talk about ages 22 through 26. I don't know how many citizens in this state realize that that's state-funded and local-funded. I found that out on my tax bill recently, when there's segregation tax, basically. I am paying to segregate my daughter into a separate school, and proper services and supports are not happening, and there's low expectations for her and those like her. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing. Okay, we move back to discussion items. The next item on the committee hall agenda is presentation on parent dashboard for school transparency workgroup recommendations. Presentation covers recommendations from three dashboard workgroups. One, students with disabilities, two, English language learners, and three, education workforce. Dr. Vanessa Kiesler will present.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm excited to be back here talking about the dashboard. You thought maybe you were going to get rid of me, but you are not, not yet at least. So as we promised, and as you all know, with the dashboard, it is an iterative and ongoing process, so what we released in January was phase one, and we were concurrently working on phase two, developing what we might build into the dashboard going forward. Some of you might be familiar at the department with what we call our way of work process, and the way of work process always starts with defining the effort. So that's what we needed to do with these workgroups. We needed to define what we were talking about in three key areas. Services for students with disabilities, services for English learners, and then the educator workforce, to make sure that we had additional stakeholder feedback on what was appropriate to present on the dashboard to make it accessible to parents. And I wanted to take a moment and thank all of the stakeholders who participated, but special thanks to our state board members who were on our committees. So Michelle Fecto participated in the students with disabilities workgroup, Lupe Ramos Montini participated in our English language learner workgroup, yes, I'm hoping I didn't miss anybody, and Eileen Weiser participated in our educator workforce workgroup. We also have climate and culture survey workgroup going on right now, and I know Tom McMillan is on that. Did I miss anybody? No. Okay, good. My information was correct. So we really thank the state board for being so actively engaged with us on this. Before I jump into the presentation any further, I just want to remind us, and this is going back to our way of work process, once we've defined the effort, one of the things we have to talk about are resources. So if we arrive at a point where we need additional data collection, remember that there are state laws in place that require a law requiring data collection. I know it's a bit circuitous, but we cannot just decide we're collecting more data, we actually have to have legal impetus. So keep that in mind. And the other is there are resources involved, both in data collection and then in development of the dashboard. So I know I keep putting this before the board, I know you do not solely decide investments in dashboards, but let's have that on our radar, that if we want to continue building out this tool, there's some cost involved. Okay, so workgroups were created and convened in these areas, talent management slash educator workforce, and then students with disabilities, English learners. So the talent management workgroup recommended the following four metrics for talking about, the original place the dashboard had was educator engagement, and so we've kind of moved toward more talent management or educator workforce. The first is career pathways for teachers. One of the components that's important in the 10 and 10 is this idea of a pipeline, a career pipeline for teachers, so the teachers can have access to leadership role, leadership opportunities without having to take leadership roles. So this is the idea of hybrid or distributed leadership, where teachers can take on those leadership opportunities without having to switch out of the teaching role into an administrative role. So this would report on the percentage of teachers within the school who are serving in some of these hybrid differentiated or distributed leadership roles. Those are all basically variations on the same idea of how many teachers are taking on distributed leadership opportunities. The second metric that the group recommended was qualified teaching staff. So if you think about our educator certification system, we have a range of certificates, a range of credentials, interim, provisional, professional, enhanced, but we also have a permit system. And so what this would report on is the three-year average of teachers who are teaching, using basically a permit is what it comes down to, a credential other than one of these. This helps get at how many teaching staff are teaching in an area for which they're appropriately credentialed and endorsed, but what the group recommended is that we don't report on it purely as it is, but we report when it deviates from the state median by 10 percent. So this idea that you can use some permits within kind of a range of acceptable flexibility, but once you get outside of it, you might want to know that 50 percent of your staff are on permits, for example. I will highlight the potential downside of this metric that we'll have to talk about is we have a pretty elaborate permitting system that we've developed to help districts have more flexibility, so that's why the group, I think, wrestled with some amount of permitting is good and we want it, and then some maybe is something parents might want to know. So we can discuss that more. And remember here, I'm bringing forward the recommendations from the group, these are not final decisions yet, so therefore further discussion.
Yes, please.
I just want to, when you say permitted, does that mean in terms of certification? I'm not quite sure of it, the distinction.
Yep, so there are four permits, and if Leah Breen is watching, she's going to call me in if I get anything wrong here, which would be good. There's at least four types of permits. Some are substitute permits, long-term substitute permits. You still have to meet certain requirements. We've also built out the permits that allow teachers to teach in other content areas with some, so if you're certified, I hate to use an example if I get it wrong, but if you're certified in biology and you want to teach a chemistry course, we have an option to get a permit so you can teach chemistry as well. So some flexibility around content, delivery, yes. And so they range, permits range from pure 90-day subpermits up to these full-year content more, you know, there's a range of them. So we may also want to consider how many teachers are on long-term subpermits, or there could be ways to even parse the permitting data. And I think always the asterisk is, just because teachers are on permits does not mean that's a bad option for... a bad option for the school. I know partnership districts are often using permits because they have to use substitutes because their teachers leave mid-year. So rather than have 60 kids in a class, they get a long-term sub on a permit. And again, think about, the beauty of the dashboard is it's not making a judgment, it's just sharing information. So would, the question I think we all need to ask ourselves is would parents want to know the percentage of teachers on permits, or is that information potentially misleading? The third metric they recommended was qualified teaching staff. So again, the three-year average of teachers of record who are teaching using a creden, no, did I back up?
You backed up.
Yeah, I feel like I was having a groundhog.
Teacher retention, that's one.
Yes, this is the next one. All right. So the third one, now we really are on the third one, teacher retention data. So the three-year averaging again, but the amount of within year and across year retention at the building level. So how many, what percentage of your teachers start the year and end with you, and what percentage of your teachers stay with you year over year. Again, teacher retention in, is an important part of our educator pipeline. It's an important part of the 10 and 10. Research shows it's important, so this might be information that parents want to know. And then the last one, teachers' perception of school culture. So there are a couple surveys that help districts, help states and districts gather information from teachers on how they perceive the school climate and culture. So this work group recommended that there be some measure of this. I would flag this one as one that should intersect with the climate and culture work group, and whatever we end up doing there, we should make a uniform decision, as opposed to collecting teacher perception, school culture data, separate from climate and culture data. But this work group did think that some perception of school culture would be something parents would want to know about educators. So moving on, hopefully, I won't reread this slide to you. There we go. Okay, so moving on to the students with disabilities work group. This group, and Michelle, please feel free to add any, and I should have said that to you, Eileen, as well, please feel free to add any information about the group's deliberations that I might not capture. The students with disabilities work group recommends three main metrics. One is education environment. And again, remember, this is about students with disabilities. So what type for each school, for the students with disabilities in that school, what are their placements or programs type, what are the type of services, and then what amount of time are they spending in a general education setting? For teacher experience, understanding for the teachers who teach students with disabilities, how many of them are endorsed. And again, this goes to that, it's the same measure from the first one, that's about how many are on a certificate versus on a permit, but specifically for students teaching students with disabilities. So being clear, but there is, there are also permitting, I will raise the same potential objection, there is also reasons to use permits to provide a educator in a classroom. It's not always bad to have a teacher on a permit, I guess is the best.
We have that, in our, in our group, we debated that, and so, but it was the, I believed it was the understanding is that it's really up to the, it's information that the parents can choose to consider or not. So to know how many certified teachers there are and what experience they have, if they have been there a long time, there's, I turn over, and then, and there was a concern that maybe it would, in certain districts where they may have had a buyout, or there might be something else going on that maybe it should be, that there could be some asterisks or some way to justify it, but the idea was, you know, just put the information out there and let the parents either call the school to get more information, or, you know, because I, I mean, I think parents want to know if the teachers are experienced and certified in teaching that population of kids, and if the school is best in hiring people like that.
Thank you. And so years of experience was the other, and then professional learning. So professional learning opportunities, how much professional learning have they received?
Right, in particular subjects like NTSAs and things like that, related to special education.
And I would, on these, this is a good place to flag, teacher endorsement and years of experience, we would be able to easily derive from the data we have. The professional learning data is not detailed enough to report on this. So we would have to make a call, yes, we want to gather more information on professional learning, how much, and tie it to, we'd have to have a requirement in place to do that. So of these three, two are pretty easy, one is a lot harder. So I think we have to continue talking about, I think, Dr. Zilei, you use the juice to squeeze ratio comment a lot, maybe that's you? This would be one, like, is, are we getting enough information out of the data collection here to be worth the data collection would be something to look at?
It's not me, but I'll steal it.
Well, that's somebody else, very smart and wonderful.
Oh, my.
Okay, moving along, student transition. So this is looking at the percent of youth who are no longer in secondary school had IEPs in effect at the time they left, and then were enrolled in higher ed within one year of leaving high school in higher ed or competitively employed, and enrolled in higher ed or some other post-secondary education or training, or competitively employed. So basically, for students with disabilities who, when they've transitioned out of the secondary school environment, are they in another setting, either employment or higher education? And this is information that we have.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of depends on the survey results, which I'm told are kind of iffy. So the group understood that the data might not be there right now in a robust way, but there were a lot of people in the group that felt what was ultimately the most important was what were the outcomes for kids in, with IEPs? You know, where do they, what kind of future opportunities did they have because of the, you know, the education? And we wanted, we thought there should be more emphasis put on transitioning kids because, you know, the unemployment rate for kids with disability, people with disabilities is astronomical, and their opportunities are sometimes, people don't have high expectations of them, as one of our guests mentioned. So that was the idea, to somehow look at outcomes, what we grapple with exactly up to that, yeah.
So the higher education piece, we do collect now. That one would be, to say easy is a bit of an overstatement because it's a lot of work, but it's a collection we have. But you're right, the employment outcomes is a little more challenging. And then last work group, the English learners work group, they recommended four pieces of information that parents would want to know about English learners. The first is teacher endorsement, so the number of English learner and bilingual language endorsements at the school. That one pretty much speaks for itself, I think. The second was program type. So there's four program types that, that ways to deliver services to English learners, I guess. So one is sheltered instruction observation protocol, one is bilingual, one is transitional bilingual, and the other one is newcomer. So are any of those offered at the school? English learner demographics, number of percent of English learners in each school, and the number of English learners per 100 students. So that's both a raw number and a ratio of student population. And then the last one, oops, is something, length of time in program. So the last one, like I said, length of time in program, so number of consecutive years a student was enrolled in that English learner program until they exited. And again, these are all pretty straightforward, and we have the data on all four of these. So of the three work groups, this one's probably the easiest to implement, although the students with disabilities is relatively close. So open for, process from here would be further discussion. We'll try to lock this down, possibly another report back to the board, or possibly either another presentation or just a report, and then working through the logistics and working it into the schedule. So.
So after the board has a chance to review that if you want to send me any comments. Eileen and Tom?
For career pathways for teachers, we want to make sure that teachers.
Microphone.
Oh, I have a microphone now. I'm armed and dangerous. For the career pathways for teachers, that was an outgrowth, outgrowth of the 21st century Education Commission's work in an effort to get teachers like Luke to have a clear pathway to stay in the classroom, because we think you're terrific, and you may want to become an administrator, but we want you to stay in the classroom. So at the time that we were discussing, discussing it, there was some question about how much of that is documented at this point? Is any of it available, data available?
No, not really, but we do collect in the registry of educational personnel assignment codes, so it would probably be a relatively easy add, to add an assignment code for a differentiated leadership sort of role. It's a little bit, when you add a piece to an already existing collection, is, on the scale of hardness, is down than a fully new data collection, like climate and culture surveys would be a fully new collection. But no, right now, we don't really know, outside of anecdotal information, we don't know how many teachers are participating in hybrid type roles or differentiated leadership roles.
So then, as we try and get at that, because Luke's sitting here, and he's, you know, ready for this, Luke is wandering around everywhere. You're doing TED Talks, you're doing district things, you're doing state things, national things. For someone in his situation, which somehow he still manages to get back in the classroom, do we even have a description that would capture the kind of passion he's bringing to a lot of teachers who are looking for role models and for possibilities?
No, I mean, I think.
So perfect.
So we, that's, we have a teacher leadership advisory committee right now that's meeting regularly and has been talking, I think, how to formalize the leadership roles. It's part of our 10 and 10 plan as well, that we know that teachers like Luke have been doing this part teacher, part leadership opportunities for a while. We have not recognized that pathway or formalized it or defined it, like you're saying. So I think the dashboard gives us an opportunity to display the results of a larger body of work that's about teacher leadership and its importance in our educator, effective educator workforce 10 and 10 plan.
Well, since we all just heard earlier in the finance study how important teachers are, and we know that already, it'd be great if we can figure this one out.
Yep, thank you.
Tom, please.
I guess I'm just thinking of our dashboard and trying to picture where these three items would be and how we would make it so that it's usable, not cluttered, you know, and there's more to come. And so, I mean, have you thought about how this is going to be integrated in a way that, I mean, before we get into, before my final question about just kind of details, just like, is it on the left?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, so that's the other caveat, is as we think about adding to the dashboard, we have to keep looking at usability.
Right.
Clarity, parent accessibility, doing all that user testing, and the development we did in the first round needs to continue. So rather than just starting to slap information on there, being thoughtful. The side headers that say student, staff, and.
Ratios.
Schools or whatever, they were envisioned, those were developed from the full group of, that original policy document that you all approved had all of these things listed, and so the work that the team did scoped those three headings as a place to categorize all the information in the whole document. So at a high level, we would think it would nest under staff or students or, but I think you're absolutely right that we need to test that, make sure, you know, get our designers involved, those sorts of things.
And then, I guess finally, you know, this, this data is, I guess, interesting, it could be used the wrong way, the right way. I guess, for me, like, if I was a parent of an EL, English learner student, or a, or a student with disabilities, that, I guess I'd like to know the parent satisfaction. You know, I mean, they could have a lot of EL students, not very many, they could have a lot of students with disabilities, not very many, they could have all, but am I happy? You know, I mean, and, you know, do they, and I think that a district or a school would say, we need to make them happy. I mean, that's what I'd like to, that's what I would like to get to, to some degree. And I know that you run into headly issues with funding, parent satisfaction, and maybe even student satisfaction. Maybe, you know, between parents and students, they can figure out whether a biology teacher teaching chemistry is that big of a deal, or, you know, having a lot of waivers or, is not that big a deal. They're satisfied, they're happy, they feel that it's a good education, and that's what we want. You know, I mean, so I still, and on the climate and culture, I'm kind of pushing that as well, but I do know that you're either going to have to work it into boilerplate or somehow get a requirement, or fund it, actually would probably be the best way, from the state level so that we can get around headly. But I still believe that when we have all these different metrics, I think that's an important metric, when you get right down to it, is, are they happy?
Thanks, Tom. Pam, and then did I see Nikki?
I think mine is really quick, and it's around the education environment. And I know, I think we brought this up before, but just around peer, peer-to-peer type programs, and I can't remember the one that's, that's most prevalent that's in the schools. But is that something that we are going to measure? I believe that we put it out there before, and that was, and maybe it's a points of pride type thing? Okay. I just don't want to lose that, because I think that's huge around the education environment.
Thanks, Pam. Nikki, please.
I think last month, we talked about making, making it more accessible in terms of, the information more accessible in terms of comparative, right? Were we able to do that so you could go in and kind of compare two schools? Okay, so that's, so.
It's in the pipeline. I don't know if it's built yet.
Okay.
But it's in the short pipeline, not the long pipeline, like immediate enhancements.
Okay.
So the head-to-head comparison, as well as the being able to see which 30 schools, when you go.
Are in your region, you got it.
Those are, I think, top of the heap for next development stages.
Not necessarily region, just similar.
Right.
From the testimony at the education, I think you mentioned that it could be all around the state.
So, yep, so there's two ways to look at comparison. One is nearby, so that would literally be nearby regardless of how similar they are. And then the other is similar, and they could be in theory anywhere, if you, wherever they are.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the committee of all. Oh, Michelle, did I miss you? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I think I brought up the last time that we spent a lot of time, because the population of, especially population can be so small and so varied. There can be schools that will, you know, take in all the kids with autism in an area or take in kids with different disabilities, and sometimes comparing from one school to another becomes difficult, because, you know, a school that has agreed to take in, you know, a population that might need a lot of services, it's going to look like they provide a lot of services where one, you know, that, so we were trying to, we had some discussion if there's any way to do a look at a district level for special education. And then it also gets into, you know, there were numbers, if they get too small, then it's a matter of, you know, student privacy. So in, it was, it was really hard to grapple with. Everybody had a lot of ideas, but then when you go to put them into operation, there was all sorts of restrictions. But, but there was a lot of discussion about the possibility of taking, going up a step to the district, which would allow, you know, a more holistic look at what the district is doing for that population.
Yeah, I think there's a, there is a lot of interest in a district level, I wouldn't even say a district level view of the dashboard, because that would assume we would just aggregate up. I think district dashboards, what information goes on a district dashboard? What do you want to know about a district that's not relevant at a school level, but is relevant at a district level? I think that's a conversation that's like on the list that we need to have. I think we've been focused on building out a really good school level dashboard, and then kind of keeping a, keeping a list of the things that are under consideration for districts. So some of those views, some of the English learner views are more meaningful at the district level. And then there's just information like district HR practices or something that might be, they only relate at the district level. So I think in stakeholder groups to come, I think we have one coming on a district dashboard, but maybe a little bit down the road, if we can get, if everybody would be okay with that.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the committee of all agenda is presentation on the partnership district model. Presentation covers updates relating to partnership districts, including agreements being signed and resources provided. Like to welcome to the table Dr. Diedrich Martin, who I said is the new SRO and director of partnership model, and he's been on board for 24 hours, so he is the expert, and he can answer all your questions. Just a few questions, and us is there to ask.
Okay, we have both of these, or may I switch back? Okay, so since it is Dr. Martin's second day on the job, I told him I'd only make him answer the really, really hard questions, and I'd do the easy ones and take all the credit. So I'm going to lead us off through the presentation, but we look forward to talking, both of us look forward to talking with you. So Brian Ardi, welcome, Diedrich. We're excited to have him on board, and we're going to focus today on our nine-month check-ins, and then the last networking session. Do you want to share about yourself?
Okay, so I won't go into all of this, but just recently left as superintendent of St. John's Public Schools, previously worked in Ypsilanti, have been able to attend two of the nine-month. two of the nine-month partnership meetings prior to officially starting, and have been trying to get caught up with the pace of the different things we have going on. So we'll be out in the field even tomorrow for another nine-month presentation.
So nine-month check-ins, as you all remember, with the partnership model, there are official 18-month and 36-month benchmarks, but one of the guiding principles of the partnership work is that we don't wait to be surprised. We don't say, here's your agreement, we'll come back in 18 months, hope it went well. We're there actively, our liaisons are there continuously, and then we up the ladder. Now with Diedrich here, that's, adds another layer of support, which will be excellent. But Diedrich, myself, Brian, are engaged with the districts on a regular basis. And also, as issues are found, we escalate them very quickly up through the chain, so that things don't sit in wait. These districts get immediate attention. So the nine-month check-ins are something we built in for an official time for myself or superintendent to get out and hear what's going on. You know, we're halfway to 18 months, and so let's not wait to have a problem at 18 months, let's see where we are now. So I'd like to share a little bit, a little bit, three big things we would point out. You know, for the nine original districts, the great majority of them are, and in the great majority of their goals, they're, they're on track. I mean, things are looking good, and I would not say that if it weren't accurate. It's, I know there's some people, I say, no, they look good, and everybody's like, really, really, what, isn't it going bad? And I'm like, no, I mean it. That's why I'm qualifying, that I'm not telling you something that's not real. They, their data's trending in the right direction, they're meeting their process goals, their staff, the thing that I've noticed at a lot of districts is the engagement and excitement of staff. And I've been around for several of the efforts around low-performing schools, and it's never been a thing that has generated a lot of staff excitement, in my experience. Staff are really engaged, they're engaged in the process, they're positive about the way their districts are moving, their schools are moving, so that's been very, very exciting.
Vanessa, can I ask you, if you don't want to answer this, that's fine, but if they had a letter F on their, on their school, or a D minus, do you think they would be as excited and engaged?
Good question.
I mean, and I, I say that, because they're not. In my view, I don't believe that they are a D or a Daphther, a partnership, that we need to just work with them. But, I mean, you know what's going on at the state level, you know, if they had the, you know, I just, I just feel that they would not, it would be harder. It would be an environment that is probably not as inviting and as welcoming and as exciting as what you're describing, that's all.
Well, I think the partnership model, I think we agree with you, the partnership model opens the door for open, honest conversations, and with the ISDs, the local district, the state, and partners who are sitting at the table hearing these conversations and participating in the conversation. So I don't think we have this-
Yeah, if I could add, just coming from the field, a lot of sitting superintendents were actually pretty excited and talking to me about the partnership model. They see it as less demoralizing and more of a supportive process towards the work that, that they all recognize need to be done.
Right. Good, thank you.
So, so I just wanted to, I've had the opportunity to go to several of the, we're not all the way through all the nine months, like Diedrich said, we go to East Point tomorrow, so that'll be exciting to hear what's going on there. But I just wanted to share a couple of things from four of the districts that I've gone to beyond these bullets, because they're, for me, when I go out to these nine months, I always just come back so energized, and I know I've spoken with Sheila after a couple of them, and she said, you sound so excited. And I said, well, I am, because this is exciting work. So River Rouge is one of our partnership districts. I know the Wayne Risa presentation spoke about them some. Two things I want to raise up that they're doing, they have put a lot of work into their Intense Student Support Network. They know that many of their students are in trauma, traumatic environments, so they've specifically district-wide worked on trauma-sensitive schools training. I may have shared this with you at the last board meeting, but they've, they've built out a whole student support network, but that includes mindfulness activities for kids during the day, includes a calming room for teachers and for students. So really thinking about ways to give kids the emotional space to engage with learning and innovating around that. And they've also done, they've done a ton of work, we were speaking earlier, many of the districts did not have an aligned curriculum when they began this process, and they all are working through that now. So now they have curriculum aligned to standards with appropriate, appropriate professional development for teachers to deliver it. But beyond that, so River Rouge has done a lot of work there, they're really a model for partner alignment. They went through a very careful process to make sure that everybody who was partnering was on board with the goals of Ann Visker and River Rouge, all pulling in the same direction. I was in Muskegon Heights a couple weeks ago, that was an inspired and inspiring staff. Their superintendent, their leadership, the team that was there, what they were saying about the work they're doing and the passion they brought to it. A couple examples, they've brought on these exploratories at the high school, they know that their students need access to experiences. Many kids in Muskegon Heights have not been to Lake Michigan, which is three miles away. So they are explicitly getting their kids out. They did an activity to have kids learn to ride the Muskegon Area Transit, so that kids know how to get around. The exploratories were kind of a, almost like those, what do they call them, J-terms, or two weeks between the semesters, where if kids had passed all their classes, this was at their high school, they got to participate. And then if they hadn't, they got to do credit recovery, and if they made up the credit, they could participate. And they had kids, they'd had nominal credit recovery up till that point, and all of a sudden had 15 kids make up a bunch, I can't remember the exact numbers right now, 15 kids make up a bunch of credit. So kids who would have just not gotten credit, said that was a failure, you know, now felt successful, got to engage in the exploratory. It was one of those things where they were going to put it off while they developed it more, they said, we're not ready, and then their superintendent, the team, said, no, we can't wait, our kids need it now. So they reported a little bit of trepidation, but excitement about how it worked, and really engaging the kids. At their high school, they're working on an adolescent literacy focus, because many of their high school students don't have basic literacy skills. So being intentional about the ways that you introduce adolescent literacy. And then at their 206 Building MLK, their focus on climate and culture there, they had, their principal has, not just their principal, it's amazing how the team there is, it's not about a hero culture, getting one amazing principal and one amazing superintendent, but there are amazing people. They've attracted talent and supported them. She implemented something called Morning Launch, and they showed us the video of the kids doing a kind of a recitation of the things they believe, that I'm important and I matter, and what I do in the world matters, and I have value. And it was very powerful and exciting to see the kids engaged the way they were. So I love Muskegon Heights, thinking, well, this is something, and I'm really excited to see their continued progress. Bridgeport Spalding, Bridgeport Spalding is one of several districts that has done personal goals for growth for each student, and that has been something Superintendent Wiston has championed since the time he came to the department. They spoke very positively about the experience of kids doing goal-setting, taking their screeners, their assessments, but then not just taking it, and the data drifts off into the world, but sitting back down and seeing where they were strong, where they were weak, and setting clear goals for where they wanted to go. And again, Brian has said from the beginning, why aren't we need to be doing this with kids? They're seeing great progress, and then, they were a good example of enthusiasm and staff engagement as well. A 22-year veteran teacher said, you know, I'm doing the best teaching in my life right now. Between the focus on professional learning communities, instructional learning cycles, these individual goals, she said, I, I'm doing the best teaching in my life. And I really complimented her on being willing to change her teaching practice and also reflect that she thinks now is the best. So that was exciting. They're doing attendance initiatives for teachers, that was something they needed to work on, so I thought that was innovative. And then the last, but not least, of who I'll highlight today, and I know next month we're going to deep dive and do a district or two, so not to steal the thunder of next month, we'll have more exciting results to report next month. So Saginaw is focusing on the needs of the whole child, really focusing on their PBIS system. Many of these districts are digging in on their positive behavior support systems, knowing that they have to deal with behavior, attendance, all those things in a more holistic way. If you remove kids from classes, you remove them from school, then they're not accessing not only the academics, but the other supports that the school can offer. Engaging in restorative practices, getting past a place of negativity and punishment into restoring relationships and having a positive school culture. And they are another one that's really digging in on instruction, aligned curriculum, their instructional learning cycles, getting to the guts of instruction. What's being taught, how's it being taught, is it aligned to the curriculum, are you using the curriculum, are you assessing it regularly? So they also had a really nice relationship, it appeared, between their board and their superintendent and the principal. So that was positive, to see the board engaged, you know, we all, we obviously have a nicely engaged board who's supportive of us, so I was glad to see they had that as well. And I know, I don't, I think our friends from Wayne Westland just left, but I saw there were some board members earlier. They just signed, they're coming in new, but they, we're excited to have them come into the partnership agreement, along with several others who are signing right now. And they, I think that their, their approach is going to be one to really watch, as far as how they're approaching school change within a district plan. So that's a little bit of foreshadowing. Our districts continue to have challenges, as we know. Two that we're really working with them on are data analysis. Some of them have access to either internal staff who can do a lot with data, or access to, their ISD can help them, others need additional supports. So we're working with the data hubs, with our own team, building out supports within our systems to help them. We don't want them spending time chasing data, that's not where the work needs to be. But data is how they prove their success, like, and I've said that to them, we can, I can tell you all these things that are real, but we need to quantify it in something that is tangible. And then the student support implementation, I would say for all these districts, they can always continue to do more to support students. And so this is where they're really starting to look for, the first nine are starting to look for investment from the state around things like after-school attendance, how can we help them? They've done the first step, but for instance, in Muskegon Heights, they said, here's all the things we've done around attendance, but Grand Rapids has a really great attendance program with yard signs and banners and things, and could somebody figure out what they did and how they do it, and how we could do it too? So we're trying to work with them on that. We spoke about this last time, so we're assisting with data analysis, staff retention, this is that overall educator workforce development plan and the individual staffing plans, helping them have plans to use permits and those things, but also how to recruit, retain. An idea, again, for Muskegon Heights, I'm picking on them, but they were full of good ideas. One of their ideas was that we look into doing a, some sort of recruitment or outreach with the historically black colleges and universities. That was an original pipeline of teachers to Muskegon Heights, and so they said, could we explore that, you know, maybe the state partner with Muskegon Heights to do that? And I thought, well, maybe not just in Muskegon Heights, this might be a really good outreach overall. So trying to be innovative too, you know, like, not keep trying the same things, what else can we do? And so that was an idea coming out of the districts. And then the partnership district, actually, this slide should have been taken out, because this networking session was canceled due to snow, but it was going to be completely focused on staffing support, so we'll reschedule this session. And again, we talked about this a lot last month, that they need, they each need tailored plans, and then we'd like to put them in groups of districts who, if they're all, let's say five of them say, yes, we want to do this recruitment with HBCUs, we kind of network them within each other, so they can share resources, share the outcome, share, you know, or we can do one, one intervention to help multiple districts as opposed to one-on-one. Even though we can do one-on-one, but there might be a, what's that, efficiencies of scale there, so. And I don't know, Dr. Martin, did you want to add anything?
No, just excited to be, joining the work. Have talked to quite a few of the superintendents who are involved in partnership, and as I kind of mentioned before, several of them seem very happy with the approach that the department is taking in that effort, so glad to be a part of it.
Questions from the board, Tom?
Thank you for your presentation. As you know, I've really been pushing that this is something that I'm glad it's on every month, because I think it's critical for this role in the board. When you mentioned that, and I'm glad that they're aligning, you know, the partnership districts, however, is this, is it all, is, one of the, the main outcome just to, or the way to get to the outcome is just to make testing like more high stakes, so that everybody's aligned to the test, and that's, or is it broader than that?
Much broader.
Would we follow Lou Blaser and say that, you know, I know that we had a presentation this morning about telling, you know, letting fifth graders know what's going to be out there, but by the time they're in the workforce, those 40% of the jobs won't even be, you know, aren't available right now. So it's totally a different world that they're going to be entering into. So I'm very concerned about just focusing on narrowing, you know, I mean, I'm glad that we're focusing on the curriculum and all that stuff, but is it broad enough? And we want literacy, we want certain things that we got to have, and so those might be why they're down there at the lower levels in certain areas. But I mean, is it at the expense of recess and broad curriculum in arts, and is it kind of like, okay, let's focus and get rid of all that stuff for a while, or, no, okay, it's nothing like, it's not?
No, I mean, so, and I, Superintendent Wiston or Dr. Martin might both have things to add. The first thing I would say is that the districts are focused on the standards, and standards aren't for testing. Standards are for what do we need Michigan students to know and be able to do? Forget testing, it's things we'd want them to be able to do, period. So they're focused on the standards and a curriculum that implements the standards, and getting away from teachers in classrooms not knowing what to teach, or making it up, or teaching the wrong things, you know, then that, then kids aren't equipped for where they're going. We don't know where, where they're always going, so we need to, you know, they need to be literate, they need to have numeracy skills. The second is, every single partnership district, while they have focused in on instruction, they are also doing integrated approaches, so arts integration. River Rouge does a full arts integration curriculum, or a program slash curriculum. They're focused on the whole child. They're very much thinking about, it's not just about give kids more content more, so they can do better on the test, it's really about these holistic outcomes. So I think it's a good question, and we don't want to reduce it down to partnership model equals testing, but I, that's not where the districts are, or, that's not even how they're approaching it. You know, they're really approaching it, and it's, the beauty of the model is that their outcomes are not solely assessment-based. So they're benchmarks based on other things too, other, and that's been important.
And I think you see a lot of it in the partners that come to the table, the various community groups and foundations who want to bring that whole child approach, and making sure that kids are having access to recess and having access to arts and music, and having access to before and after-school programs that aren't, you know, just traditional math or science, but maybe looking at a way of providing math and science through the arts or through a different mechanism. And so I, not only do you see it from the district, but I think you see it from the partner conversations that take place at the table.
Thank you.
Michelle?
A couple of things. So once the time period is over, how do we know that they are successful and no longer need to be in a partnership model? So what is the measures or?
So the measures are, each individual contract, the district sets the measures, so we don't set those measures. You know, we make sure that there are high standards and quality, but they set them. So if they meet their goals, they're going to be in the partnership agreement for three years, unless at 18 months, you know, they just totally have missed the ball, and we haven't seen that, so we're not expecting that. But, so they're in the partnership model for three years, meeting the 18-month goals, 36-month goals that they set, and then they set the parameters by which they're judging the success. So now we're going to be releasing in the next, to districts in the next few weeks, and then publicly in the next month, our next round of districts. And you'll see some of them, our partnership districts have grown enough that they're not in the bottom anymore, but they would still maintain their partnership agreement for three years.
So if they're on the bottom, so then are we still doing a ranking of schools?
I mean, each school will get an index number, and then that will tell us.
Okay, so there might be more schools coming in to the partnership model?
Yep, we had nine, we had seven originally, we added nine.
We had nine originally, and we added seven.
Nine originally, we added seven, and now we're going to add somewhere around 26 to 29 the next round.
Okay. And forgive me for not knowing, but this is based on their test scores?
Well, right now, in the past it has been, in the future it'll be based on growth, proficiency, grad rates, looking at ELL performance, special ed performance, it's the index that we talked about.
Okay, okay.
But not a single test score.
And this is just a personal indulgence, but as, as the mother of many, many teenagers and what motivates them, I always wondered, are there schools that are using driver's ed? You know, I mean, it's great that they know how to use the buses, but what would really be independence for a job and for, for, you know, going to college, or a community college, would be the ability to have a driver's license? And I can tell you, in Detroit, there are so many kids out here who drive without a license, then get, then get picked up, then have a suspended license, then go to jail, then are so in debt that they can never get their driver's license. So I, and I think whoever made the law to change that, to get the driver's ed out of schools should, should, anyway, should be considered. It makes no sense, no sense, as I'm driving around Detroit, half of them don't have driver's license. But, so, has there been any initiatives that you know of, grants or ideas, in working with, maybe motivating kids to graduate, or if they're doing well and have their credit maybe motivating kids to graduate or if they're doing well and have their credit recovery to actually get free driver's ed and ability to have a driver's license?
In the current partnership districts, no, but I think that's an excellent possible idea that we should put on the table for the districts that have high schools that they're, or even the districts, yeah, I mean, I think that's an interesting idea. Because Muskegon Heights is, Muskegon, some of the ones with high schools are thinking about how do we redesign high school to make it more meaningful to kids for what they're doing? So, I think that's a great suggestion.
Right. And maybe even the, the auto industry would pony up since, you know, they could sell a few more cars. Do some more.
Yeah. Please.
Of course, I always have to say, thank you for your energy around this. It's great to have you on board and it's great to see the, the team so energized. And so happy that Tom did push for this to be on the agenda each meeting. And I definitely have heard from community members who are like, Pam, what did, what did that meeting really mean? So, they are really anxious and eager and wanting to know what it takes to keep moving from the bottom of that list. And so, they are wanting to know and make sure that whatever report you're giving them really is indicative of where it is that they're going. They, you know, these districts really want to serve their, their students. And so, they, they don't want to have something jump out of the bag and they could have been doing something. So, that was definitely, someone called me yesterday and said to make sure that, that they're getting a true and honest response on what it is that they're doing and how they can do better. But, but they are excited, but even more than excited is really wanting to make sure that they take full advantage of this opportunity. So, I think that that falls between what Michelle has said and what Tom has said, really, you know, what does it mean? And, you know, how can they make sure that they're, they're being best directed? And then, what, when will they get the nine-month, when will those schools that you just reported on get their, their reporting from the visit?
That's a good question. So, when we thought up these nine-month meetings, they were conceived of as more as like a check-in, like an informal check-in. More than one has said, well, where's my report card? Kind of, where's my, where's my write-up? You, because when I've gone, I've always made a point to talk to the staff about what's going well, what seemed, you know, a couple of areas of focus. So, I think we need to talk, and this would be a Dr. Martin question, do we want to give them formal feedback now? Is it more informally? No, they were really meant, and we have worked hard to be at the table as a partner, not as the state up on the stage with the rules and the laws. And even though that at some point is our role, we're a partner right now. We're in problem-solving stage, not judgment stage. So, I think we need to weigh the pros and cons of, you know, written feedback or, because it's not an official checkpoint. It was just a, a time to see and a time to make sure that, you know, I walked away from each of them with an ask from the district with a sense of what they needed from us, which was why it was important to go. So, I don't know that we're going, I mean, I, I think we're still deciding what level of written feedback we want to do.
Yeah, and I'll just, just reiterate because I do think that it's imperative that somewhere in between, we definitely want to break them, you know, that whole regulatory relationship, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're giving them feedback so that they can continue to, to move forward.
Yep. Good point. Thank you.
Lupe, please.
Well, I have to say that I am very pro-partnerships. Partnerships with people, organizations, but specifically in education. Now, when, I'm not going to say the name of the district, but when they started their partnership, Brian was going to speak to them and I don't know who else. And so, one of the board members called me and said, oh, I'm so upset they did, said this and they said that and they're going to do this. So, they were very upset that you all were coming. But now, they love the partnership. They have called me and invited me to their board meeting and they want to showcase what the progress they've made. So, that's a seal to, a stamp to the, the work that you're doing, that the department's doing, the vision that, that everybody had. And because the school districts are truly feeling that they're not at the bottom of whatever, and the schools are going to be better and it's all about student achievement. So, it's happening, so I'm really excited. And you said that school districts will come next month to report on their progress. Is that what you said?
I know you all requested a more in-depth look into a district or two. So, I think if we can get some to come in person, that would be good.
Oh, that would be real good.
You know, we try to minimize the amount of time we take them out of district to come to Lansing, but-
Oh, they love coming.
We find at least one.
They love getting out of the schools, I tell you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Next item is approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of January 9th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries. Report of the co-presidents, please.
Just very quickly, I was on the NASB Government Affairs Committee phone call yesterday and they sent out, as a result, most of what we talked about was President Trump's fiscal year budget request. And so, I'm going to send this to you, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things from this document that they've sent to us. The, the request, as you know, obviously, this is a very long process, if the process even gets followed, which it hasn't in the past. But, the proposition is for a $3.8 billion cut to the Department of Education. And what that looks like, just a couple of the highlights. They compared these proposed cuts or increases to the House and Senate suggestions from last year. And it means for HHS, a decline of about $100 million in head start funding and a zeroing out of the preschool development block grant, which is about $250 million. And then for the Department of Education, we're looking at zero out of Title II, which is professional development. That's about $2 billion from what the Senate Committee recommended last year. And then, a zero out of the ESEA Title IV, zero out of, and that's, Title IV is roughly $450 to $500 million based on what the House and Senate were recommending last year. A zero out of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, which would be $1.1 billion from the House and Senate fiscal year 18 requests. A decline in state, for state assessments. And, and the other one was, there were a couple increases, an increase in charter school grants from roughly $370 million to $500 million. And for HHS, an increase in block grants of about $200 million. So, obviously, this is a long-term procedure that's going to happen, but this was the opening statement, if you will, from the administration. And now, we'll wait and see what the House and Senate does. And I will be sure to forward this to all of you.
Thank you. Okay. And on the state level, Governor Snyder has proposed what may be a historic rise in per pupil funding for us. These actually may be hand-in-glove, more responsibility from the federal government to the local government. And that means more responsibility for us as our hands are less tied by federal regulations and we make the decisions that will affect our, our children's future. I look forward to those developments and I hope that the legislature will support the governor's recommendation coming forward. On a, on a more personal matter, at a, at a dinner entitled "The Celebration of Global Warming" on Sunday, I announced that I intend to seek reelection for this, this board. And one of the great reasons is the wonderful professional and personal relationship with my fellow board members. So, I deeply appreciate the work that we have done together and hope to be able to continue doing it. Thank you for your, for your work today. Thank you very much. Report of the superintendent. I know Tom was there to see Neil Cronkite, a fifth-grade math and science teacher at Washington Woods Middle School in Hope, received a Milken Award. And I think I saw Tom in the paper with the check. You did give it to him. All right. I want to make sure you gave it to him and then keep it. The check was for $25,000 from the foundation to the teacher. And it's a very exciting experience and I would encourage board members, when you get an opportunity to do that, to go. Because it's a complete surprise to the teacher and everybody's in the gym thinking they're there for another purpose. Then you really get to embarrass or surprise a teacher like we did Luke for Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations to Neil and to Hope School District. And we wish them the best.
All right. Two weeks ago, I had the amazing opportunity to get a chance to meet all of the other State Teachers of the Year from the other states around the country. They actually sent us to Google's headquarters in California, which, which by the way, was amazing. And the people were amazing. It was just like a totally transformative experience. And one of the things that we got to learn about when we were in California is this program called Educators Rising. And so, I'd like to talk a little bit about this program, but I think that it's important, before I talk about the program, to talk about why we might want to consider a program like this. So, I'm just going to present three articles that I found on the internet from reputable sources, I think. So, here's, here's the first one. This is a recent study that, that talks about teacher shortages. And I'm sure that at this point, you know, if you're involved in education, you, you've heard this narrative, that there's less teachers going into teaching, there's less qualified teachers that are going into teaching. And maybe this is part of the reason why we're, we're getting in this situation where we have to have special permits and, you know, special ways of getting teachers into the workforce. And so, this is something that's, that's real. And if we want to think about the future success of education in the United States and in Michigan, that, that we want to be thinking about this. How can we attract more high-quality people into the profession of teaching? So, that's article number one. Article number two, this is a recent study that was done that says that having just one black teacher can help black kids in school. And so, this was actually an experiment that they did with elementary school children where they randomly assigned them to different teachers, and then they followed those students all the way through high school. So, this was a long-term study that was done. And what they found was that an African-American male is 39% more likely to graduate high school if they had at least one teacher that looked like them in, in elementary school for this, for this particular study. And so, you know, we, we talk about graduation rates and I, I think, like, there's sort of this, well, well, this, this narrative right now that the, the rates are pretty good. And they are. They're actually at a pretty, you know, all-time high as far as historically. And in Michigan, we've had a slow increase in graduation rates, we're about 80%. But the number that you don't see is that within that 80% graduation rate, 83% of white students are graduating high school and 67% of African-American students are graduating high school. And so, I, I think that this is a, this is an issue. And this is an issue that we can, can think about. And I think that maybe this study is providing us, one of the possible solutions is that we need our, our teacher workforce to be more diverse. You know, I, I teach at the number one most diverse high school in the state of Michigan and out of the 100 teachers that are in my building, there are three African-American teachers. And so, this is something that we need in Kentwood. Our students need this. So, I think it's, there's, there's a lot to be learned from this particular study. Now, this one, I think we'll all know quite well, that the state of Michigan and, and the Michigan Department of Education has this big push right now to expand CTE programs. And we heard some great things this morning about how they're getting kids excited about their careers while they're still in school, while they're still in high school. And I think that just adds huge value to the motivation to, to why we, why, why kids want to do school and why they want to be successful at schools, they have a long-term goal. They know what they're working towards. And so, you know, obviously, you know, the MDE's been doing a huge amount of work around thinking about different routes for, for kids and, and what types of careers they'd like to go into. So, I have three ideas there that I just presented quickly. So, if we were to turn those into goals, we would like to try and eliminate the teacher shortage that we see in the state of Michigan. We'd like to increase the diversity of the teacher workforce within the state of Michigan. And we'd like to have more career opportunities for students while they're still in, in high school. And so, towards these three goals, we have a, a solution that I think actually addresses all three of these ideas. This program called Educators Rising, if you look, it is a CTE program specifically designed for high school students who want to become teachers with a focus on recruiting minorities. So, the idea of Educators Rising is if we can identify students in high school who have an interest in going into the educational field, let's get them started on that while they're still in high school. Let's get them thinking about becoming a, a teacher when they're, when they're in high school. And so, they've actually developed a curriculum already. The curriculum is all put together. Schools can adopt this curriculum actually for, for free. And, and they can identify students. They can do it as a one-year program, a two-year program, or there are some schools that are actually doing it as like an after-school program. So, there's like different options of ways that high schools can implement this Educators Rising. But actually, I took a look at, at the curriculum that they have and it, it really is phenomenal. And I got to see it in action. So, when we were in California, they scheduled a morning for us to actually visit one of the high schools that's using this Educators Rising program. So, this is Boynton High School. It's just outside of San Francisco. I'm there with several other State Teachers of the Year. And we got to sit in on the class with, with these high school students who, who want to become teachers later. And we actually got to have a, you know, a, a informal discussion with them. We had like a panel discussion with them afterwards. And this particular high school was, had a very high percentage of Hispanic students and a majority of the students that were in this class were Hispanic students. And one of the interesting facts that I remember from this presentation was 60% of teachers teach within 20 miles of the high school that they graduated from. So, what we're really doing here in our communities is we're growing the future leaders of our communities. At East Kentwood High School where I work, there are lots of students that are in my high school right now that will become my colleagues at some point. In fact, I have dozens of, of colleagues that graduated from East Kentwood High School. And so, why don't we start growing our future leaders and our future teacher, teachers from within our own community, from, from within Kentwood? And then we can have that diversity. We have the diversity in our student body. Let's grow that to become the diversity in, in our teacher workforce at, at East Kentwood. So, it was really, it was inspiring to, to go and actually see this in action. They use the curriculum that, that comes along with the program. They do it as a two-year program. So, students actually take a, a class in their junior year and a class in their senior year in preparation for going to college to become a teacher. Now, there are some states that have become what are called affiliate states. So, they've made an agreement, a partnership with this Educators Rising to become an affiliate program. And then Educators Rising therefore then provides additional resources for anyone that's within that state or any school within that state that's decided to adopt this Educators Rising program. And currently, Michigan is not on that list of, of affiliate states. So, last thing I'm going to show, just, this is like a 52nd clip of a student who went through this Educators Rising program and is, is about to become a teacher.
I will be returning back to my home city to teach in the public school district and hopefully will be able to teach at my middle school. I want to be a teacher because I want to make an impact in my community. I want to reach the students or the youth that have no hope. I want to give them something to hope for, help them expand their knowledge and just have them believe in themselves. So, I want to be that overall role model with that student. I want those students to know that they can do it. They can be a teacher, they can be anything they put their mind to. But specifically, as a black male, I was a statistic in my community. So, I want them to know that Southwest Philadelphia can make it, that we can do things that are unbelievable. So, hopefully, I'll be going back with a PhD one day and they can see that. A young black boy from Southwest can come back with his PhD and teach in his community.
There you go.
Thank you.
So, if you can give me some information on what it would need to become part of the Ed Rising, we'll do it. One of the things we're excited about is in our five-year programs, early college programs. A lot of school districts are starting teacher academies as part of that, which means kids get the first two years of their college paid for to become a teacher. So, I think, you know, how we can make these programs work together is very exciting because we know to solve the problem, you're exactly right, you know, like having districts grow their own is the key. And so, more five-year programs or something like this that we can offer districts, I think is a big, good solution.
And certainly, I think that the universities would be willing to, to partner with, with the high schools because of course, they, you know, they, they would like more, more students in, in those programs. So, I think that there's a way to, you know, partner also with the- So, I think that there's a way to, you know, partner also with the local universities.
Right.
Thanks, Doug.
Can I add a little to the report? I know in Grand Rapids, the Ferris State University is partnering with Grand Rapids, and they're continuing their education in the school, but they're getting credit at Ferris State. Then, they have to go to Ferris State and then come back to Grand Rapids and teach for a certain amount of years. So, that's an exciting program that initiated this year. Another thing that I would like to add to the report is this.
Wait a minute, what do we got here?
No. This is Grand Valley State University Magazine, and our two teachers of the year, Tracy and Luke, were featured in this last issue. And the fabulous pictures of the two, and so on and so on. So, you know, we are, in the department, are doing a great service to the teaching profession by highlighting the teacher of the year every year, because this is one very, very positive way that we promote the profession. We promote the caliber of teachers that are out there, and those that are struggling with whatever reason, we have people that can mentor them from their own peer system. So, when I got this in my mailbox, you know what I felt? Wow. I said, "This is tremendous. I have to share."
Thank you, Lupe, and thank you to the department as well.
So, you know, they have a pipeline for the high school students. My brother, who taught in the South Bronx for many years in New York, had a program that I thought was amazing, where they would take parents who had come and volunteered in the schools. Often, they were, you know, they were unemployed, single moms, and they would offer them, ones who were doing a lot of work or seemed to have potential, could apply for scholarships, and they would go to college to become teachers. So, they would promote them to become teachers, and they would hire them back into the school. So, it gave, you know, it provided, and those teachers stayed. I mean, they knew the, they knew they were committed to the schools, you know, they, matter of fact, I know a friend of mine, her mom was in that situation, and she became principal of the school years later. But she was a single unemployed, she was smart and was struggling to get her kids to the school, and it was just incredibly transformative for the whole family. I've never seen a program quite like that before, and I don't know if it exists, or if it was just this single model, but it, where they had the actual parents come in and got them involved, and got parents engaged in the school. They had these opportunities to go on and become teachers themselves, so.
I've seen it with paraproses who've come in and worked like four hours with a student.
Right.
That districts have helped them become teachers.
Right.
I think I've heard of it at that level.
Head start. My grandmother did that.
She did that?
The first round of head start in this.
Yeah, Ferris State is doing that, too.
Good thoughts. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, the state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will provide an update, and then we'll turn it over to Eileen.
Yeah, good afternoon. Didn't realize the bright, the lights were so bright.
Oh, yeah.
So, you may need some sunglasses. Cassandra did a great job highlighting the, or highlighting the President's budget on education. And from the state level, the legislative committee met on the first of February. There weren't many bills moving at the time, but since then, some have, some action has happened. House Bill 5379, a bill to allow for the possession and application of sunscreen at schools, was reported from the House Ed Reform Committee, and is on the floor of the House right now. The governor did sign into law House Bill 4735 to expand the definition of eligible institution for post-secondary dual enrollment. That's the cross-border bill that we, I think we've discussed before, so that students can do dual enrollment in another state, in a bordering state, if it's, if the distance is too far from their border town or their border district. The governor, as Richard mentioned, the governor did introduce his executive budget recommendation for education, the largest increase in over 15 years per pupil allowance. There's also some $50, up to $50 for districts who do CTE programs, a lot of other things in here. I'm not sure how much detail you would like me to go into. And then, the House Education Reform Committee Chair did introduce House Bill 5526, which would create an A through F accountability system that would give A through F on components. It wouldn't be a summative grade. And so, I'll hand it over to the...
And we did put in a card.
We put in a card on behalf of the board in opposition to that package, to that bill. So, Eileen?
So, I was there in a disadvantage, sorry, I was there in a disadvantageous seat, which is that I could hear, I could see the back of Doug Greer's head, and I could sort of see the slide, but I couldn't hear the entire presentation. The things that popped out that I did hear were, at least twice, Doug talked about the dashboard, about how good it was. I want to make sure, because I don't, I don't think any of the staff were there. But he talked about how they're able to, that the promise that it holds for Ottawa ISD, it's the Reading Now Network that they've, I think they've come, and I know they've been before the House Ed Committee, Reform Committee. I can't remember whether they presented to us also. But there were tremendous kudos, because it will be a base for the information that they want to use. What they've been doing internally, though, from my understanding, is to use a dashboard system, I've got a summary here from, is this, to rate pupil proficiency in math and ELA by the percentage of all pupils who achieve proficiency on the state assessment, and the percentage of all pupils who achieve adequate growth in math and English Language Arts on the state assessment, the percentage who are English Language learners who achieve adequate growth, the graduation rate, the rate of pupils who are chronically absent, and the participation for each applicable state assessment. So, what I saw for the first time was something that people were describing not as a gotcha, and not as something that was going to be used to punish schools and children, but something that Ottawa Hills is using as an overlay on the dashboard to help their schools be visibly working needy and being able to help them work toward better outcomes. That's the first dashboard that I've seen that made sense to me, which is one of the reasons why I initially voted for the, for our, I'm sorry, not dashboard. It's the first A to F letter system that made sense to me, and why I wanted to see what our dashboard would do. I don't feel that our dashboard allows the legislature or others to say, "This school could do better. Let's put resources there." And with the funding, the adequacy, or the funding study that we just saw this morning, I think there's reason for us as a board to ask Doug Greer to come in and present to us. That's obviously out of my ability to command, request, or do otherwise. It's a function of the Agenda Setting Committee. But if the, because the Detroit legislation requires an A to F grading system, I think there, it makes sense for us to at least listen to what they're trying to propose and see if we can temper it, if it's not a good product. And I did not get enough information while I was there to determine whether or not it would do as they stated, which was not to punish children and punish schools. And then, the other thing to add to Marty's is that all heck broke loose after the legislative committee. I, you know, just, a lot of bills started seeing action. So, I don't think there were any others that we didn't discuss. We reviewed a package of 10 or 12 bills that were not, there was no proposed funding for. Marty and the staff decided to wait to analyze it, because the amount of money needed to implement was substantial. So, it didn't appear that it was in the budget, or even had been asking for budget funding, which meant that it probably wouldn't be taken up this year.
Correct.
Thanks.
All right, Lupe or Nikki, anything you can answer me?
I have a question for...
Go ahead.
Where is the gun bill that supposedly, if I understand correctly, the Supreme Court, the Michigan Supreme Court is looking into it?
Yes. The bill right now, it's, I think it's a Senate bill, it's in the House. It's in a House committee. I think it's a Judiciary Committee. I could be wrong on that. There's no discussion, or there's no word on the street that it's moving at this point. So, it's, you know, it passed the Senate, it's in the House, and it's not, it's not moving right now. They may, they may wait for the Supreme Court to rule. I'm not sure. I can't speak for the committee.
So, excuse me, so it's still in the committee?
Yes. And it has not had a hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, please.
So, on 5526, I listened to the hearing, and there's an unelected commission that's involved in this bill that will, so the state will get into deciding which metrics. So, they're gonna create A to F based on, I think, testing, you know, the percent of kids who take the test will get an A to F, and I don't know what the six or seven, or whatever they are. But, I mean, that's gonna open the floodgates first. I think everybody who, everybody's gonna want a metric, like, you know, school nurses are gonna say, you know, if we get a metric, then there'll be more funding for that, so let's get, their lobbyists will be in there. Every lobbyist, you know, every, every interest is gonna say, "We need a metric, so that we're looked at." You know, that's what's important, is whatever the metric is. So, and there's unelected commission, isn't there, that's gonna decide how to, how to come up with, how to grade the metrics?
The bill would create the Education Accountability Policy Commission within MDE. The commission's purpose would be to develop a statewide system of accountability measurements for public schools to improve Michigan's national ranking in education. The system would be implemented by MDE and consist of A through F grades for several school indicators, not a summative grade. Other indicators would receive a ranking for each public school relative to schools of similar demographics. Pupil groups of each school also would be compared to those statewide. Now, the composition of that commission, the governor would receive three appointees to the commission representing business sectors, nonprofit orgs, organizations and associations, K-12 institutions, and post-secondary organizations. The Senate Majority Leader and House Speaker would each get one appointee, and the state superintendent would receive seven appointees, two representing PSAs, two representing school administrators working in school districts, two representing school administrators working in ISDs, two representing urban school districts. All members would have to be appointed by July 1st of 2018, according, I mean, you know, if the bill doesn't move, that date may have to move. But, so that's what the commission would be.
Right. And I guess, and then you said that there's not a summative grade, but at the end of the hearing, the business leaders of Michigan, or one of the, a business group, and then Ed Trust came up and said, "Oh, this is fighting Danny, but we need a summative grade." And we know that, once this door is opened, that they're gonna say, "We can't have six different grades. We need one grade." And parent, you know, some activists came up and said, "I want one grade. I want you to tell me who's good and who's not. I don't want to have to figure it out," is what they said. So, you know, I mean, it was, but that's, that is gonna be the drive. If you go this way, you're not stopping there. There's the, you know, Ed Trust and the business groups, they have their, they have full-time lobbyists that'll pound this thing until we get a summative grade. It's gonna be ridiculous.
Nikki, please.
Thank you. So, I'm really passionate about this bill. I think ultimately, the reason why I'm very passionate about it kind of comes out of the quote that Paul shared this morning, the concept of consistency of purpose, policy, and practice, how lack of focus sort of leads teachers, parents, and students away from the ability to set goals and achieve, okay? When we have this moving target, this constant moving target, makes achievement a very difficult thing to aspire to. So, my thought process is, when we're talking about accountability systems, whether it be accountability in education, the ultimate question of should states step in and be grading schools A to F? I think the answer's no, of course. We've made that clear as a board. But it's very interesting to see how the inconsistency sort of has, has come out in the ed reformers' circle, okay? So, we had Common Core come on the scene, and we moved away from a grade-based system then. We said, "Hey, let's try this CPME thing, where, okay, this is an area of concern. This is, you're progressing towards the standards, you're meeting standards, you're an E, okay?" Or 1 through 4, whatever it was that we were, we, school districts chose to implement. It moved away from the grade-based system, A to F, okay? And then, just in October, we talked as a board when we were over in Grand Rapids about competency-based transcripts. It was really small, and I asked for, you know, what would that look like? What would a competency-based transcript look like? But when we talk about how we've, we're moving away from that because of ed reform, we're moving away from grade-based assessments and informing parents of progress based on grades A through F. So, if we're moving away from that, why are we asking the state to do this in terms of grading schools, whether or not they're good or bad? And why are those same ed reformers saying, "Gosh, we don't want things to be confusing. We don't want to infuse chaos into this system. We want students to achieve. We don't want the target to be moving." If that's what you want, then don't be so inconsistent. This is, this really isn't okay. If we want students, parents, and teachers to be empowered to make change and to achieve, this is not the kind of chaos and confusion that we should inject into our system. So, I'm sorry for coming across so passionate, but I'm also not sorry. So, at this point, I absolutely do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra, please.
So, I just want to echo what both of you just said. I have some serious reservations about this, too. But the first thing that I would mention is, I really think, whether it's a summative grade, or it's, you know, eight different, based on people who are appointed by, you know, politicians, at the end of the day, this is really open for manipulation. I can take your A school and turn it into a C school, based solely on manipulating an algorithm. And if we can do that, then this doesn't really give people a lot of information. Who's to say what an A is versus a B? And when we changed that, you know, we did the same thing when we had a top-to-bottom list, and then we looked at maybe going to an A through F, and we went from a bottom 5% to a bottom 14, just based on the fact that we were changing what we were grading. That's not fair. And the fact that we can, that this can be manipulated to this extent is really concerning to me. And it doesn't tell anyone anything, because at the end of the day, someone has to create this complicated algorithm to determine what is the difference between an A, a B, a C, a D, or an E. And most people, unless you're a psychometrician, are never gonna be able to replicate that or even understand what went into it. So, I have some real concerns about this.
Thank you very much. Cassandra? All right, so Nikki and Lupe, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I had a, I had some questions, other sides of the issue.
Great.
So, I see there's a whole, there's three areas I've got questions on. So, I see a whole series of bills about the enhanced MESP, the Michigan Education Savings Program.
Yep.
It looks like it's got, it's moving. I also see something, HB 4610 appealed the option to remove lapse provisional education certificates, which I'm not sure why someone would make it harder for someone to renew their teaching certificate if they want to become a teacher again. I had some questions on that. And then, there's one that's in a third reading, which has to do with this school district improvement. HB 5238 clarifies terms of operation, operational improvements for school districts. I'm not quite sure what that is, but those were, but it does look like it's advanced for a reading, so it might actually be going somewhere. I just wanted to know if you want to...
The enhanced Michigan Education Savings Account, those are Senate package of bills led by Senator Kolbeck. Those were reported out of the House Education Reform Committee. There was, what these bills do is allow people to have a savings account, to allow for them to pay for education costs, be they extracurricular or whatever. And so, these would be tax-free savings accounts. So, those have moved out of the House Committee. They're on the House floor. There was a change done in the committee, so they'd have to be, again, voted. If they get out of the House, then they have to go back into the Senate and get a vote. So, that's, that's those bills.
So, is it taxed, is it so people can put money into that after their, it's not like a deferred?
Correct.
It's not like a flex account, where they would take the money and put it aside, be like a 401K or something?
Pre-tax?
It's a savings account.
Pre-tax or after?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's pre-tax.
Last I heard, I believe it was pre-tax.
It's pre-tax.
So, it was like a 401K or 403B?
Yeah. And so, right. And so, or, you know, if, for a family to do that, or someone else can put money into an account for another student, like if a parent's business wants to contribute to a fund, they can do that, too.
No limit?
But we did raise concerns with the bills.
Yeah, we did, right, right. We did.
Yeah, I just wondered what the financial impact.
Pardon me?
What were the other bills?
The other one that's gone to a third reading is that one about the...
I'd have to check on that.
Clarifies terms for operational improvement.
Clarifies terms for operational improvements for districts.
That might be, who's the sponsor?
Griffin.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, the one about the not allowing a lapsed teaching certificate to be renewed. And that's HB 4614 repeals the option to renew lapsed provisional education certificates. So, if you have provisional, you can renew a provisional.
Yep, I'll get back to that.
All right, that's it.
That's good. Thank you. All right, so Lupe, Nikki, anything on NSB?
I do. I thank you for this opportunity to report on NSB. It's a great organization, and I'm so happy that we're part of it. We are going to be hosting the NSB Legislative Conference on March the 4th through the 6th in Washington, DC, and the title of the conference is Bridging the Divide. How many of you are planning to go? So, you and I. And this will be my first or my training session as a new director of the region. So, very outstanding people from all over the country with the same passion and the same desire to make schools a better place for our students to achieve. So, I'm looking forward to the conference in March.
All right, good. All right, next item is consent agenda. Are there any items the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda prior to the vote? Seeing none, is there a recommendation?
So, move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Comments by state of the boards, comments by state board members?
I have something. I want to thank Wayne Risa for this opportunity to come to visit your area, yours. We heard about all your schools, you're doing a marvelous job. I love to hear positive things that are happening in our schools, and I heard of today. Now, I have to say a little bit about Paul. When he comes to our meetings, which we really appreciate that he comes almost every month to our state board meetings, and he is real quiet.
You don't know the real Paul.
Yeah, and today, he exploded with information and gave a great presentation, so I had to give kudos to Paul today.
We'll get you to meet the real Paul. Any other board comments? Tom?
Just as mentioned, I did enjoy the Milken National Educator Award gathering and ceremony. It was a lot of fun. The teacher was just totally deer in the headlights. It was, you couldn't believe that he was chosen, and that, it was very exciting. And then, I did attend the dashboard presentation that Vanessa gave to the State House Education Committee a few weeks ago. She did a great job, but the, boy, the, that House Education Committee, those members, they want all kinds of stuff. I mean, just tons of stuff that I think would be real problematic as far as, I don't know, they, they wanted things that afterwards I was told would just, it would be like sending tons of paperwork, all kinds, just more and more paperwork and granular information. And so, we, I'm glad that the eight of us are advising, and it's the dashboard and the MDE is putting it together, and it's not being done by legislators. As a former legislator, I'd say it would be a disaster.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. Eileen, please.
Only because, you may still hear, but I ended up on a panel last Monday in Grand Rapids with Doug Rothwell, who heads the Business Leaders for Michigan, and Kevin Stotts, who heads Talent 2025 in Grand Rapids, for about 450 people, talking about new visions for education. And I'll also be on a panel with Dave Campbell and John Recolta on March 22nd that is sponsored by Business Leaders for Michigan and I think the Center for Michigan. Sorry, not Business Leaders for Michigan, but the Center for Michigan and, sorry, I can't remember who the other one is. But there's a fair amount of interest outside the board and the legislature right now in how, with all the reform plans, everything from Lou Glazier's, which was presented, Michigan Future Plan to us, the department's plan, the Governor's Commission Report, BLM partnered with Ed Trust Midwest, and that plan will be reviewed by their board in a couple of weeks and released in March, and the funding adequacy study, how to bring all of those together and what they might mean for schools and for children and for families. Thanks.
Thanks, Eileen. Yep, Pam?
I just want to, actually, I want to piggyback, piggyback on what Lupe said, and just really thank you for the hospitality. And I was talking to you over lunch, and we did not get a chance to interact with you, but it was really impressive to hear the work that you're doing. Again, like with the partnership model, we get energy off of your energy, and to hear how you are really partnering with your districts and really supporting your districts, and I mean that beyond the partnership model, but really helping to empower them. I know that there's often strained relationships between the intermediate or regional districts and the local districts, but this really seems like it's really a support system that's well-received, so I'm really happy to hear that. And then, from our presenters or our, those who came to speak, it was, it becomes more and more apparent to me that, I think that we need more education around the Native American and the indigenous culture, and so I don't know how we do that. I know I could learn a lot from it, but if there's any way that we can talk about how we look to see how we provide those opportunities and those platforms to be more or better educated on the culture.
Thanks, Pam. All right, let's see here, next future meeting dates, not to confuse people, but our next date we're meeting is Wednesday, March 14 instead of the normal Tuesday, so March 14th, Wednesday, 9:30, Tuesday, April 10, and Tuesday, May 8. If there's anything you'd like on the agenda, please let myself or one of the officers know.
Governor's Summit is Monday, Tuesday, that's why we're making Wednesday.
Yeah, Governor's Summit is Monday, Tuesday, which is why we had to move to Wednesday. So, again, thank you to Randy and your staff for the great work, the great food, and for making us feel at home and sharing good work that the ISD is doing. So, thank you with that. With that, we are adjourned at 2:58.